All right, guys.
Well, welcome everybody to this week's Town Hall, the second post-election edition, if you will. Robin, it's a delight to see you tonight. And I'd like to start off a little bit with an observation. Isn't it fascinating that the most democratic controlled city in the most democratic controlled state, as per the video that Tim Holliday put together, is the only one without rat control? It just makes me kind of ironic.
Well, maybe they consider it to be, you know, I don't know. Eating their own, so to speak.
That's where I was going with that.
The lead rat doesn't want to get caught.
That's right.
And it kind of just shows why we have a lot of work to do in this state, everybody out there. Look, I know every election again last week didn't count exactly what we wanted, but it's interesting as the results continue to compile up. And with it looks like Riverside winning team, thirty out of fifty-eight counties voted yes on the recall.
We need the Electoral College implemented here in California. And on that note, on that note, that's a serious topic, folks. You have one city in California basically dictating how the state is run and who our government is and who's in power in the state Capitol. That very same city would decide who and what our government looks like nationwide if we were to lose the Electoral College. The Electoral College is one of the most important fundamental tools of our society that give people the vote that, you know, it's not just one man, one vote, but it's, it gives a vote across the board for the entire nation. So everybody's vote counts. And not just one isolated geographical area that suffers from group think.
You know, it's fascinating, and Robert, as we kind of move into tonight's show, when you look at the geography of the state, and it's funny as I was kind of counting up the, looking at the counties, if you will, landmass wise, and we all know this, but I'm looking for the city county of San Francisco. Because I don't see it. I wanted to make sure I counted it. It literally on the map is a tiny, tiny dot to what you're saying to me. Literally, when you look at it on the geographical map, when you go to the SOS, it's incredibly small. And Bailey's attesting to that with only seven, seven hundred thousand.
Did you just call San Francisco a pimple?
I pretty much.
I can't believe you've said that with Magdalena on the line.
Well, all due deference to Magdalena. It is tiny, tiny, tiny. And it's surrounded by other areas, but what's interesting about them compared to Los Angeles, which isn't that big where people don't vote, I will hand it to SF, even though they voted no, they did come out and vote at one of the highest percentages. So again, as we look at drifting into taking our new mantra, if you will, of rebuilding California, to rebuild it again, you can see where we need to do rebuilding, not only in terms of spreading the word, if you will, but getting the people out to vote and the next thing. But before I forget, Robin, I am so delighted to see you back. I know we traded phone calls over the last couple of days. How are you feeling?
I'm feeling great. I'm, I'm almost back hundred percent, ninety-nine percent.
Well, ninety-nine percent of Robin's better than a hundred and ten percent of me, that's for sure.
Robin and I are both proof positive that people with a pre-existing conservative condition can survive COVID.
That's right. Like ninety-nine percent of the other people, right?
Yep. And, you know, it knocked me off my butt for a couple of days and knocked you off your butt for a week or so. And, you know, it's nothing to sneeze at, folks, and people do die from it. You know, take precautions, wash your hands, you know, just sanitize and stuff like that and treat it with, with respect that any illness deserves.
Exactly.
And God bless both of you going through it, et cetera, et cetera. And it's fascinating on this election cycle as it turned to a lot of the attention about COVID as we talk. And by the way, I want to give a shout out again to Tim Holliday. Somebody asked Jeff Rodean put that video together. No, Tim did. And all the video and all the audio production you've seen for the next six months is Tim Holliday, the black screen, the black square on the screen up here, who does an amazing job and really puts an immense amount of time into this to give a plot to him. Cynthia, I see you missed the number that you're asking about. It is thirty counties out of fifty-eight by my count right now in the SOS map that had voted yes in the recall. San Bernardino is actually fairly close right now. Riverside is turning around. Want to answer another question that I saw on the feed too about elections. Look, we're all going, or Orin and I are this week to the California GOP convention. Or do you want to talk about that at all at the beginning of the show?
Are they gonna let me in?
They're gonna have to let you in. We're dressed, we're dressing you up. You're gonna be in disguise.
I may need to, I may need to wear a disguise because, you know, as Gavin Newsom has painted this recall as the great Republican takeover, I've coined it as the great Republican rollover. You know, I may not be among friends down there, folks. Wish me luck. But, but I do have to say that if the Republican Party had invested one tenth of what Gavin Newsom's team had put out towards us, we would have stood as a fighting chance. And, you know, they, they, for the majority, they opted to sit it out and wait it out and sit on the sidelines. You know, I saw a couple of emails from them coming out and so forth where they were asking for seeking donations. We actually had a couple of contentious phone calls with their leadership over that. But beyond that, I don't, I don't know what the hell else they did. I don't know where they were. There were, I didn't see any television ads. I didn't see any social media ads. I know they probably did a few. But was their heart in this like our heart was, like the people's heart?
Frankly, Orin, to call those phone calls contentious is kind of like calling a riot a small bar brawl. Reality is this, and I'm going to be a little bit more direct. I'm going down there with Orin this week too, and it's going to be a little bit contentious. And by the way, that isn't just Orin and Mike and our earlier we're going with. There are lots of people upset, but frankly, I'm going to be really blunt here. The lack of leadership that the Republican Party has supplied in doing this. So if anybody from the press is rewatching this, if this was a Republican-led recall, please find me the leaders in the Republican Party who are supposed to be leading it. I mean, seriously, Robin.
Who was in charge at the Republican Party? Because, you know, yeah, there were no coaches on the field.
I get in trouble. I get in trouble sometimes because I offend some Republicans by saying they're gutless wonders. But I'm sorry, it gets very frustrating to see one to two emails a week, the last year and a half on the back of the recall, asking for money in comparison to their level of donation, effort, interest and dedication. So you know what? Actions play louder than words. And sadly, the leadership was not behind the Republicans. If this was a Republican recall, where were they?
Hundred percent. And I'll tell you what, as far as the leadership goes with those, with those guys, you know, we may need a change. We absolutely, we definitely, like, like I've always said, you know, the recall was where the people stood up, where the parties and the politicians let us down. And that's where we are. So, you know, it's just indicative of where we stand today. We need new leadership. And on that note, Robin McCray, Mike Netter, Dan Sione, Susan Hurd are providing just that. We are the new leadership in California and we are providing a platform where we can begin to rebuild California from the ground up, from the grassroots level, where of the people, by the people, and self-governance has become the greatest threat against the legislators down at the Capitol, just twenty minutes from where I live. They have dissected the recall process, the initiative process, and they're tearing it apart and they're trying to gut it for everything that they can get out of it to try and eliminate our ability to self-govern. Self-governance is what this country was founded upon, of the people, by the people and for the people. Then, as quoted by President Lincoln during his Gettysburg Address, he reaffirmed that fact. That's what we're implementing. And the, this legis, the legislators, as soon as the recall election was over, they went on the attack and they began, they took out their scalpels and they began to open it up and dissect the recall process. And it's under attack now and they're going to try and do everything they can to limit our ability to take effective action in government. And I'll tell you what, folks, and Mike, thank you for giving me a moment to speak. But the recall process, let me back up. This is really important because when you have a single party supermajority rule in government, the people are the only thing left in the system, the only check left in the system to balance things. And the ability to recall a government official to remove them from their position is the only thing that keeps them accountable and representative of the people they serve. Because just like any corporate official, the only thing that keeps them from going off the rails on, on the deep end is, is the, the threat and the fear, they can be fired someday. And if the people don't have the ability to fight, remove a government official to fire them, then they can continue to act with impunity and fail to represent us and without any accountability to the people that they serve. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you folks. And I'm going to go try and quiet my dogs.
Let me go into a couple of things here. I want to answer a couple of Steve's questions. One is, when you talk about why did the Republican Party not be more active is the quasi-political word for it. They're a bunch of idiots. Okay. The reality is that, is that they don't have the mechanism. Look, the fact that they wanted to start up a lot of things, what was it, Robin? Six weeks before election time, they finally started up the machine a bit, right? The reality is, they should be doing this all year long. Much of what we did and what you on this call and those watching on Facebook is that we're doing the work of what the party is supposed to do. When you talk about what are we going to do about election fraud and election mechanisms, it's kind of the work of the party a little bit. So when we talk about Robin, Orin, myself and these others kind of being, taking charge of it, that may be what we have to do with rebuild California. The reality is, much of the questions that we've been asked throughout this process is actually the work of the party. To answer another question of Dave and Steve, and I'm sorry, I think his name is what Alfred E. Newman, the state senator? What is it?
Josh Newman.
Oh, yeah, Alfred Newman. No, I got it right. Alfred Newman, the guy that's proposing, it's pretty close. Idiot, sorry.
Yeah. When it comes, when it comes to statistics or numbers, Mike, you're great at, at, at putting the numbers together and following the statistics, you're just not really good at repeating them. That's all.
Well, that's true, but Alfred Newman is the guy from Mad Magazine, who probably actually is brighter than Josh Newman, who's the one putting SB six sixty on the ballot, which is the one that you're talking about, which there should be some protests because again, they want to change the game. But this, my friends, is actually what rebuild California is a lot about. Okay? So we have the Democrats on one side now reacting to things that happened in the recall, why they proactively put junk on the ballot, which violates our rights, et cetera. We have the Republican Party and I've told them their face and I'll tell them again, Orin and I may not make it through the weekend. Who puts proactively on the ballot? Nothing. Yes, you heard correctly. Of all the propositions they have put on the ballot, none of them have been defeated because in the last ten years, they actually haven't put any on the ballot. Kind of the defeat of the gas tax they tried to put on the ballot, but the reality is the gas tax shouldn't propose to begin with. So we, the people in rebuild California, have to continue to fight. And again, I know it's looking at the map, it's not, it's turnout. It's blatant out and out turnout. We talked twenty-five percent, twelve percent. And I've mentioned this to Orin before, by the way, that Alfred Newman is trying to change in the state senate. I think the one part.
Joshua Newman.
Yeah, Joshua Newman, close enough.
Cheers to Joshua Newman.
Cheers to Joshua Newman. I think the one thing that they're missing to begin with, it's always based on that people that voted in the last election. And I think that's important to know because you could make it twenty percent, but the Democrats, in my opinion, are actually suppressing votes. It doesn't pay for them, and for some reason, it doesn't seem to pay for the Republicans, to drum up votes for only less than forty percent of eligible voters even voted in this last election. It just doesn't pay for them to do it because they're afraid that they'll lose their grip on power.
Voter apathy is a far more greater threat to our system than it is voter fraud. Yep. What did I just say? Yeah. I'll say it again out loud. People are more concerned with voter fraud than anything else right now, but that is not our greatest threat. Our greatest threat is voter apathy because when people continue to pound the drum of voter fraud, or they beat the drum, that California is such a deep blue state that we can no longer win, it's no longer sustainable to, to cast a vote in California as a conservative because your votes here just don't count. I'm sorry, folks, but it's that defeatist attitude. It's that voter apathy that is causing all the problems. Mike, you had a wonderful expression the other day. And it was basically that you've got to be on the field and to get fouled.
Be on the field to get fouled. You got to play to get fouled, right? You got to be in the field and in the game.
And my reaction to that is you can't catch a fish if your hook's not in the water, folks. If your ballot isn't in the box, you don't cast your vote, that's a vote for the opposition and it's your fault. If you didn't vote in this election, the reason Gavin Newsom's still in office lies squarely in your lap.
I also want to add something else here to that too, as we go on our little rant. The Republican Party is losing people. And by the way, the Democratic Party is losing people. So again, like California has the largest NDPs in the country. I was surprised to find the largest group of voters period growing are NDPs throughout the country. So we have, when, when your own side, the conservatives, call them what you want, the Republicans don't show up to vote. And we have to spend time over the next nine months, making sure we reach out to those people who have just had it with the political system that think both parties suck because again, eighty percent are in the middle. Robin, you got any comment on that?
Well, I have one comment and I don't know that I have any facts on it. But the more I learn, my girls have been out of high school now for dating myself over twenty years. But when I hear more and more people saying civics is not taught, I'm really dating myself when I say that I went to a high school where not only did we learn the legislative process, but we learned about the conventions and delegates. And we went through a mock, what do you call it? An election, a forum of having representatives from each state. And I think part of the thing that's so sad with what's happening with our education, cancel culture, the far left, sadly, not now only in college, but high school and even younger, being the lead to set the stage for the education our students are receiving. Much of this part of history and civics and the importance of voting is left out.
It's the dumbing down of.
We're dumbing down. And it just means that more of us need to talk about it, spread the word, make sure we're talking to our children. And as more people go to charter schools, I would hope that would be something that would be brought back in to the classroom.
Civics was eliminated from our curriculum in nineteen seventy-two. And it gave way to a required foreign language, which at the time was Spanish.
Right.
And today, we have people cramming CRT down our kids' throats and, and controversial sexual education material into the public schools. And that's exactly why we need school choice.
Yes.
In, and, and it's up to people like us, like rebuild California, to bring things like this to the ballot. Robin, we have the ability to change what you just said. We can impose, the people can reinstate, restore civics into our curriculum. We have the ability to do that through the public initiative process. We can do that. And, you know, school choice is a great threat to the public teachers' union. And I understand that. But in reality, school choice will bring competition into the educational arena. And it will reduce class sizes across the board. It'll put people in curriculums where they're most comfortable with. And they have the, the ability to flourish. And it's not, you know, one pill fits all, you know, one size fits all school curriculum where the, you know, the, the teachers, unions and this, this educational system want to, you know, drive indoctrinate our children. And I appreciate it again for allowing me to go on just for another minute. But in our neighborhood here in Sacramento, in the Natoma School District, there was an instructor Gabriel Gipe, who was giving his students extra credit for participating in Antifa-style protests. He had a flag of, he had the Antifa flag in his classroom, the chairman Mao in a poster of Chairman Mao in his classroom. He has tattoos, communist tattoos on his chest with the sickle and star and so forth. And I firmly believe that Gabriel Gipe brought two carloads of his students in front of my house to protest. This is three weeks ago now or four weeks ago, while I had COVID, while I was fevering. And ten thirty at night, eleven o'clock at night, here comes these two carloads of students yelling and shouting in front of my house, calling me out by name and then, and then yelling profanities to intimidate me and my family and my neighbors. You know, so, and I, I'm not accusing him of this. I'm saying that I firmly believe it was him and his students because of the timing of the whole thing. But Project Veritas did a sting interview with him. And you can enter Gabriel Gipe, G-I-P-E, into your search engine on YouTube and you can see exactly what this asshat was indoctrinating our students with in the public school system. And I'll tell you right now, it's infuriating what this guy did, what he was allowed to do. And, and the fact that his principal and the student board, or not the student board, but the, the school board was not aware of what was going on in his classroom. I don't believe that one minute. If the, if the school board's not aware what's going on within their school systems and that principal's not aware what's going on in their school, they need to be removed from office. And that's exactly what this recall process is for and why it's so important. That's why it's so important because school board officials, judges, a lot of people, you know, officials, if they are not doing their job, we have the ability to remove them from office. And that's why we have to protect the recall process with everything we have. In the coming days, there's going to be hearings down at the Capitol. And I fully expect to attend those hearings and voice my opinion as loud and long as I can at the Capitol. And I'm going to be there with friends. I'm, I'm calling everybody out to the, to the, the team, to the table, to be there during these hearings. Be heard, be seen, be loud, be vocal. We, we need to let them know that, that they're not going to do this with impunity. We are going to hold them accountable and we're going to address these problems if they don't do it for us.
And along those lines, I want Tim to play a video next. It features me in it. That's the main reason. No, not actually this. As, as we roll on here, we're going to take the skill sets that Orin and I and Robin have learned in the last year. And we're going to continue to be, whether, whether we like it or not, I guess, the public base of this. And so we're going to continue to push forward and we have to continue to do this. And I want Tim to roll this video because I didn't even know what I was getting thrown into on a Wednesday morning after the election to show you that we have to continue to use the vehicle that we have, rebuild California now, to push forward and, and keep our public base in the news because the party's not going to do it for us. Tim, will you just roll a few minutes of this a little bit?
Time to bring them in. Steve Maviglio is a Democratic political strategist and former press secretary to Governor Gray Davis. Mike Netter is the co-founder of RecallGavin2020.com. They're both based in California. And to give us the perspective from Washington, we have TV journalist and political commentator Scotty Nell Hughes. Welcome to all three of you. Thanks for joining us here on the Nexus. Mike, I'd like to start with you. It was a huge effort by you to bring this recall vote to fruition, but it's failed. How do you feel?
Actually feel pretty good. And this may sound strange, but what's important is that two point one million people had their voices heard by getting on the ballot. It's a great narrative that it's Republican versus Democrat. The reality is across California, it was all races, all creeds and all political parties that got it on the ballot. Now, we got on the ballot for under a million dollars, which is pretty phenomenal in politics today. And Newsom and his fellows came in with sixty million dollars to defend the crown of him being governor. So the odds were against us getting on the ballot and even greater against us getting this passed.
You want to paint it as a sort of David and Goliath fight. I can understand that. But isn't it the fact that majority of people prefer to have Gavin Newsom than to have one of your guys?
Here's the problem. The majority of people choose not to vote. The problem is that people and many people in California feel powerless. Look, in the presidential election, eighteen million people voted. Last time Gavin ran for governor, only in aggregate twelve and a half million people voted. This time, it looks like the turnout was only about just under ten million. So the reality is, as much as they talk about being a Republican recall, most of the Republicans didn't even come out and vote. Percentages are very popular in politics. I like to look at numbers. Gavin was reelected with about forty-two percent or not recalled with forty-two percent of the people that are registered to vote in California. California has a bigger chunk of people in the middle called no-party preference between the Democrats and Republicans. We're generally the state of we don't care unless our house is on fire or on the homeless or in front of us. And that's what it's growing to. And that's what got the recall on the ballot. Dissatisfaction with the Democrats, if you will, or the one-party rule, which has led the state for forty years and the problems are continuing to compound. It's nice to talk about it being ideology. It's really about trying to find practical solutions for California. And it got turned into an ideological warfare.
You were very passionate onstage addressing your supporters, trying to drum up support for your, your petition, which you did achieve. And that's pretty amazing stuff. But what was, what was driving you? Why did you feel you wanted to get rid of Gavin Newsom? But what was what was driving you? Why did you feel you wanted to get rid of Gavin Newsom?
Look, California has become, for these politicians about politics, I've lived in California over fifty-five years. The reality is, the politicians don't seem to care about California. Ms. Harris became senator for barely under a year, and she's running for president. Newsom, when he got elected governor, already reserved the website for running for president. It's time we got California politicians that care about California. And it's pretty obvious that most politicians don't. Let me give you an example. In this election, which just took place, Joe Biden, the President of the United States, came in, Ms. Harris, the VP, Bernie Sanders from Vermont, Elizabeth Warren from Massachusetts. Where are the big Democratic politicians that have the belief of the public? Gee, there weren't any. So the reality is, as soon as the Democratic politician or Republican one, which we have very few of, becomes a rising star, they're out of here. They're on to Washington. We need people that care about Californians like the Californians that live here. That's what drives me.
Okay, Steve Maviglio, you were involved in a recall election yourself. Unfortunately for you, your candidate lost. What sort of a trauma is it for a candidate to have to do this in the middle of their term?
Well, you know, despite that attempt at painting this David versus Goliath, this was a quarter-billion-dollar waste of money. We had an election, speaking of short timelines, just over a couple of years ago, where Gavin Newsom is in his office, and we're having another one next year. So we have just squandered resources that could have gone to schools and healthcare and important things that he talks about on a wasteful, a useless waste of time to prove that California is not Texas.
Mike, waste of time, waste of money?
No, absolutely not. First off, California has a two hundred and seventy-two billion-dollar budget. So it's nice to paint two hundred and fifty million as a lot of money. That's barely a drop in the bucket. And may I add, under Gavin's watch, there's up to thirty-one billion dollars of EDD fraud. Democracy, any voting, to paint it as a waste of money is a front to voters. And it's that kind of hyperbole, if you will, that I think suppress people from voting. And by the way, Gavin himself, in his own reply in the petition a year ago, guesstimated the cost of an election, this special one, to be eighty to a hundred million dollars. It just shows again, kind of bad budgeting, Gavin, which is the problem that the state has. I never, ever want to hear that any election, anything that exercises democracy is a waste of money. Yes, there's another election. Should we eliminate elections altogether to save money?
Steve, that's a that's a good point, isn't it? And the Democrats are always saying how precious and sacred a democracy is, and elections are. You're saying it wasn't really worth the money.
Absolutely not. There were five previous recall attempts against Gavin Newsom, including one literally months before he took office. All of them failed. This effort would have failed, having not been for a judge giving the sponsors of this one an extended period of time to collect signatures. And that's when they got the big money to put this on the ballot. You know, it's nice to say, oh, if people would just stand on the corner and collect signatures, that would be real direct democracy. But nothing has been been put on the ballot that way for more than two decades, because this has become a big business. This attracted Republican money from across the country, Mike Huckabee, Newt Gingrich. Those kind of people all thought they could go behind the back in the will of the California voters that they made in a regular election to elect a governor.
But Steve, are you are you now questioning the judgment? Are you are you now questioning the judgment of the judge in question, who granted an extension to the the petition?
No, I'm not saying it was a good or bad decision. I'm just saying the only reason this election occurred is because of that extended length of time.
Okay, but that's, those are the rules. Those are the rules. Scotty, let me just, I've just head over to DC for a second and bring Scotty in for the first time. Scotty, we know all the bigwigs from DC came in. Biden's words were something like, you know, the whole country's watching this, the whole world is watching this. Why was it so important for all of these stars of the Democratic Party to weigh in?
Well, I think you heard that type of speak coming from a politician who knew that his guy was going to win. Hence why you saw him heading to California at the last minute, as well as Kamala Harris and others, because it was pretty much from the very beginning, an uphill battle. And I appreciate what Mike is doing. He obviously very much loves California. He is obviously very passionate about it. But there is a reality check that once again is being served to Republicans. Guess what? California is so deeply blue that if you would have even been able to get this on the ballot, you still had such an uphill climb that it was going to be a very small chance, unrealistic chance. And I think most Republicans know the state, a state that has almost zero representation in the state legislature, that has two Democrat senators, that has this continuous Democrat agenda that is coming from the state. The good news for Republicans is, that's also driving people from that state. Because you had in this last instance, a hundred and eighty-two thousand Californians for the first time decided they no longer liked the policies of California, and they moved out. The majority of them, guess where they moved?
Good question. Well, that's a good point, Steve.
Florida.
Steve, why are people moving out of California?
Well, let's put that in perspective. We're a state of, how many? Forty-five million people?
No, I think it's thirty-nine point five. No, thirty-nine point five? Can we all agree on that?
And a hundred and eighty-two thousand was the net loss of people. That's the first time-
For the first time ever in history, in history. You gotta, you gotta have a reality check here.
What's your point?
Yeah, what's your point? Many more people move in that were higher income, and they were more educated.
They didn't move in. That's the thing. You had a hundred and eighty-two thousand lost.
You had a lot about the influx that is this myth that you people from DC who don't live here don't understand. There actually was an influx of people with higher income, higher education, and that's why we're number one in the country in attracting venture capital and business.
But you didn't. That's the problem. That's the reason. Hold on one second. Let me finish my commentary on this state. Because here's the deal. Governor Newsom, yesterday on the ballot, was completely different from the Governor Newsom that we saw six months ago, eight months ago, when it was actually getting the signatures and collecting. What you saw was Governor Newsom being who he is the best, a politician. And the same sort of restrictions that Governor Newsom, you say that this was, the Democrats are selling this as this was a mandate on the COVID protocols, that this showed that people supported. That's not what this showed, because that's not who Governor Newsom was yesterday on the ballot. Governor Newsom opened up schools on time, something that he had closed down all last year. He had the beaches open, something he closed down for a second wave last spring. Just these past few weeks, stimulus checks are going out to people within California. He was a politician. People were happy today, unlike they were six months ago.
People in elected office are politicians. You're correct about that. And if you think the COVID strategy of anybody in the world was consistent over the last two years, I think you're living on another planet.
Steve, just, sorry, Scotty, Scotty, hang on a second, Scotty. Scotty, we need to slow it down. Not all of our viewers know in-depth about what's going on. You mentioned the stimulus checked. I think the implication there, Steve, was that Governor Newsom was bribing people to vote for him, essentially in an indirect fashion.
Yeah, and that's absolute nonsense, as anybody who lives here can tell you that. That that legislation was passed long ago, and it just, that's the time it took to get the checks out.
Mike, you live there. Nonsense.
Everybody knew that schedule.
You could say only a hundred and eighty-two thousand net loss, but that's a net loss in a country which had its population grow by twenty percent since the last census, with companies like Oracle, Hewlett Packard, et cetera, moving their headquarters. Yes, venture capital comes into the state. The rich have gotten richer, and they funded this election. As far as the six hundred dollars goes, that's a state law that isn't supposed to work that way. That balanced budget amendment is supposed to refund money equally to all the taxpayers. Gavin reshuffled it so he could refund six hundred dollars to people right before the election and actually didn't follow the law. But since we have an Attorney General and other folks that are all one party, no one challenges Gavin. Look, the reality is, we have one-party rule in California. You know that. I know that. Everybody knows that. And when anytime you have one party that rules for too long, Democrat or Republican, it ends badly. I live in California too, my friend, in the LA area. You want to come downtown LA and walk the streets with me? Happy to do it. These problems have not been solved.
Mike, Mike, you live in a one-party state because the majority of people support the Democrats. Isn't that it?
No, we live in a one-party state because Los Angeles isn't stimulated to vote. That's the problem. It was talk about, look at yesterday, it's voter turnout. There's nine million Democrats, five point three million Republicans, and six and a half million no-party preference. It's a large chunk of people that aren't getting information from either party. That's the problem in California.
Scotty, there was a point raised by Larry Elder earlier in the program in which he said, Joe Biden, Obama, and the rest, they don't really care about Gavin Newsom or think that highly of him. They just want to protect the senatorial seat in California that may or may not be vacated by the somewhat elderly Dianne Feinstein. How important is that?
Oh, it's extremely important. Every Senate seat right now, when you're dealing with such a fifty-fifty and with Democrats barely having having the majority of the Senate right now and controlling the House, right now, everything is about twenty twenty-two. Hence why, like I said, you saw the parade come through California at the last minute, because they wanted to make sure this win, they could take credit for it and think that this was going to be able to what propels them into the twenty twenty-two elections, which is the exact opposite of what the rest of the country is. This is the reality of it. The rest of the country is not California. You do have a mixture. You have people that are very unhappy right now. And the situation with the withdrawal from Afghanistan, with the COVID policy lockdown, the economy's starting to really suffer with a recession, right on the verge of it. There are some real issues that Democrats are going to hope to distract from, and this win right here is exactly what they were hoping they could use going into twenty twenty-two. Because guess what? They don't have much in their arsenal right now, and Republicans are pretty much have the momentum behind them to defeat the parity in power right now for basically the last nine months of what this administration has done.
Steve, when you look forward to twenty twenty-two, what do you see in California?
I guess, first of all, Scotty apparently hasn't read the polls with the Republican rating, approval rating in Congress somewhere near the bottom of the poll of twenty-five, thirty percent. But this shows-
Depends on which poll you read, as we all know.
There's a lot of things that voters across the country can take from this. And that is, the Democrats are on the right side of the issue of vaccinations and COVID. That was the number one issue here. Our Republican friends are anti-vax, they're anti-mandate, and California voters across all parties rejected that, the strongest, number one reason.
And that's a complete lie. That is a complete lie.
That is a complete lie.
I don't know if you know this, but Donald Trump was the one who came up with the vaccine. So let's start with it. It's Donald Trump's vaccine, and he got, and Republicans are not anti-vax, and that's a complete lie, a narrative that you're going to try to spin. Donald Trump- No, it was Trump's vaccine. He was president when the vaccine developed.
Okay, guys, I just want to hear from Steve, and then, Mike, I come straight to you. Steve, Donald Trump came up with the vaccine. I mean, it was Operation Warp Speed under his administration. What's so amusing about what Scotty said?
Because Donald Trump did not come up with the vaccine. I think it was the private sector who came up with the vaccine, and Donald Trump supporters are the most resistant to the vaccine. So to try to link those two things together, kind of-
Well, I mean, I don't think she was saying that he sat in a laboratory with a white coat on, inventing it by himself. But he created the conditions by which all the companies could get the green light and all the money and regulatory approval, emergency youth authorization and so on, to push it forward. I mean, that's clearly what she's saying, no?
I don't view it that way. I think most people in America viewed Donald Trump doing everything he could to not get America prepared for what happened with COVID. It was in denial for so long, and we still see that among the-
That's the difference between-
Okay, guys, we have to wrap.
And the actual vaccine-
I know, as all good Americans, you understand the word wrap and you respect it. Steve Maviglio, Mike Netter, Scotty Nell Hughes, thank you for that very frenetic debate. Much appreciated, and thank you, and at your at your homes and on your phones for watching.
All right, guys. The idea of showing you that was to show when you that was six thirty in the morning after the election, Orrin, Robin, and I, this is what we're up against. We're willing to take them on one-on-one, and we will not take crap from them one-on-one in the meter anywhere going forward, even less than twelve hours after election results were allegedly reported. So be aware that we are going to go out and kick their ass in whatever term, whatever means, media, or forum that we need to.
Gloves off, Mike Netter is in the ring.
You rocked it, Mike. That was awesome.
Hundred percent.
Okay, and that's why we wanted you to see that, to see that Orrin and I and Robin and everybody else are going to continue this fight with as much gumption and as much fire as the day that we started. We are going to rebuild California, and as some of them get in the way, they're going to be rolled over by the steamroller. That's all I got.
Absolutely. And for those people who are listening to this broadcast in, as we go forward into the future, the Facebook groups that we have have been modified. We've switched them over to rebuildCalifornia.com. We'll have new flags coming. We're going to have new stuff, new merchandise, as they call it. It's the same bear, the same movement, different name, because Recall Gavin is done and over with. We're moving on into the phase two, phase three, phase four. Recall Gavin is done. We're now looking at the twenty twenty-two cycle and rebuilding California, and we will rebuild California from the ground up, rebuildCalifornia.com. RebuildCalifornia.com is under construction, folks. So if you go there, it's not going to be the refined website that you're familiar with, Recall Gavin twenty twenty dot com, but it's in the developing stage, and we are developing it rapidly. We have the same team working on it. You know, there's just a lot of things that are unfolding all at once, and we're taking them all on. There's a lot going on behind the scenes. There is a lot going on behind the scenes that you're not aware of with election integrity. There's a lot going on behind the scenes with different recalls throughout the state, and those will be forthcoming more as information comes available. But as we go forward, folks, this is it. The pen is mightier than the sword. This is a peaceful revolution. This is a peaceful movement, but it's a movement nonetheless, and we are going to take action and we're going to make the changes that we want to see in California. And we are the new steering committee for this state.
God bless you all. Go ahead, Robin.
Do I have time to share one thing?
Yes.
The new website, Rebuild California, like Orrin said, is in the works. But be sure, if you want to help us with this movement, just since the election, the increase in people wanting to join our sixty-plus Facebook groups, one for every county, and some cultural community groups, I am shocked at the increase in people wanting to join. And that said, when our new website is up, there will be a place to volunteer. And if you have an hour a day for your county to help screen new members, that would be greatly appreciated. Some of our people have dropped off. The people that are still with us and working are overwhelmed. So think about it. That is one thing you could do in a half an hour to an hour a day, is help us build our groups to spread the word.
We need some, we need some additional moderators. Is that what I'm hearing you say? Okay, so, Robyn McCray, Susan Hurd are our state administrators. They oversee the volunteer operations throughout the state. We have no less than seventy-five groups throughout the state. There's a quarter of a million people, members, that belong to these groups. We have two hundred and forty administrators. We have, what, ten regional managers, roughly? And we need people to continue this fight. People are tired. They need to come off the field. They need to regroup and regenerate. And we need your help to continue the fight, to to bring new new life into this battle as we go forward. And there are people on this show tonight. If anybody wants to talk about what they want, what what we're asking, you can call me. My number is nine one six seven six one two three one two. Nine one six seven six one two three one two. I'll explain what it entails to be a moderator for some of our groups, where you are, how you fit in, what you can do. And then, of course, we vet our moderators so we don't get any of the opposition coming on board and and playing the fool. So, you know, if you're the opposition listening in and you think that you're going to get a leg in, don't. Because we we check everybody and screen them before we bring them on board as a moderator. But we do need your help, but more importantly, you need our help. So get involved and and participate. And this is where it starts, folks. This is, you are the the army, the ground army, the warriors that are moving forward, and we do need your help. And Steve, and you have my number now, my friend, and you've chimed in quite a lot. So apparently you've got time and energy and drive. So I I think that we need to have a conversation, okay? Give me a call, and we'll have, we'll talk as we move forward. And God bless everybody. God bless America. Thank you, Mike. RebuildCalifornia dot- And God bless everybody. God bless America. Thank you, Mike. RebuildCalifornia.com.
Our roar will overcome them, and our pen is mightier than their sword. God bless and good night.